Good evening, welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting Monday, Tuesday, September ninth. We'll begin this later.
To the fire, and to the republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, indivisible.
All right. Mr. Shepherd, can you hold the board, or take the roll? Am I on here? Can you hear me? Is that on?
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Chairman Dance, Vice Chairman Mullen, Secretary Galloway, Supervisor Palmer, Supervisor Boraski. All right, so obviously we don't have a call on tonight, so we really can't vote on anything. But this is a budget workshop, so we can do the budget presentation, the workshop presentation, and go through that stuff. There was an item, number four, that obviously we're not going to handle. Also, tonight is our very first meeting with our new manager, John Shepherd. We wish we were in the new building or even in Middletown, but welcome to John Shepherd.
Thank you.
And we had an executive session, Mr. Clark.
We had an executive session to discuss personnel matters.
All right, just a public comment, is there any public comment tonight?
And Mr. Dance, if I could just point out too regarding item number four, that item was going to be removed anyway. After consultation with the manager, Mr. Tekeeta, and the architect, a representative from the architect, we've decided not to proceed in that manner as outlined in number four. We're going to be proceeding in a different manner. We aren't going to act on that any.
All right, we're not sure what we're doing, but that's fine. Yep, this is the public comment, are any hands for public comment? Have one hand. You got, um, I'm getting my mic in front. Just state your name.
Nicole Paskey. I'm Nicole Paskey.
Okay.
Is there, okay. All right. My name is Paul, I'm a resident on Thornridge Drive. I'm coming here today with a traffic safety concern on the top of Thornridge Drive. Exciting from Tanglewood to T-Berry Lane. This house has been in our family for sixty seven years. I recently bought the house three years ago after my grandparents had passed away. My husband and I were very excited and hopeful to have a good experience there. That has not been the case. On August the tenth, we were playing outside with my seven, six, and two-year-old. When a car exceeded the speed limit posted at twenty-five miles an hour, lost control of their vehicle, jumping the curb, driving across our sidewalk, on our driveway, and through the yard, nearly claiming the lives of my children, myself, and my husband. As a stay-at-home mom and a homeschool family, we use our friendly words, we spend most of our days there. Now going outside is terrifying. We've been stripped of our safety. We feel fearful every time we walk outside or hear a speeding car pass our house. This accident was only a matter of time though. It has been my biggest fear since I moved there, which came true since two thousand and fifteen. My family has been advocating for a safety measure to be taken place in this portion of the drive, which is the upper part. And we have consistently been dismissed. Sadly, this is not the only event that has happened. Over the years, there's been multiple cars that have been totaled, trees been hit, that have later been taken down, hit runs, physical verbal altercations between people who have nearly collided or have collided. Tonight, I am asking for your consideration to apply for a grant. That grant is through the state and the Department of Community and Economic Development to help fund improvements to our upper part of the drive. We stated our concerns to Falls Township Police, the Traffic Control Committee, Falls Township Engineers, and you in two thousand and fifteen, but these discussions are ongoing and the dangers have only increased. On a daily basis, I see cars, trucks, school buses, delivery trucks racing around the bend where the speed limit is posted again at forty-five, or I'm sorry, twenty-five miles an hour. These bends are tight, they're blind, they should be posted at ten, fifteen miles per hour. They're speeding along long stretches, swerving, slamming their brakes through the narrowing roads and bends, not to mention the impaired line of sight, making a right or a left-hand turn from the side streets onto the drive and on our driveways. Our drive is also used as a cut-through during school hours, there's lots of traffic going onto New Falls Road. Instead of going that, they ride down Penn Valley, up through Thornridge, go up the drive, and back onto New Falls Road to hit Tyburn Road. These roads were built in the forties and fifties. They were never designed to accommodate the modern-day traffic that we have here today. Delivery trucks making frequent stops, parking right in the middle of the road, blocking traffic completely. There's also been an increase in people in our community since the fifties. Therefore, the cars aren't just parked in the driveway, they're parked along these side streets and drives. Cell phone uses were not considered during the time of building these streets. So unfortunately, they do cause distractions and making the situation worse on unpredictable roads. We have to keep up with the needs of our ever-changing, modern-day community. The speed limit for the entire drive is twenty-five with only one stop sign. Unlike North Park has seven stop signs and painted lines, Birch Valley has two stop signs and painted lines, Vermillion Hills has six stop signs with painted lines. How did these stop signs get approved? North Park, although they do have bends, they have three stop signs on a straight path. As for stop sign approval criteria, you have to meet a history of multiple accidents, which we do, a traffic volume threshold, which I mentioned, conflict of turning vehicles, and problems with sight distance, which again I said. How does Thornridge Drive not meet this criteria? We will be requesting a right-to-know for all these stop signs and how they were approved. But the stop sign is not the only answer. We want a collaborative approach with the police, community members, traffic control boards, Falls Engineers, and you to come up with the best way to make Thornridge Drive a safe place to live. Thornridge is home to many elementary and high school students who have no choice but to walk to school as the proximity to those schools are too close for bus use, which means our children are walking, biking, riding in their suitors a hundred and eighty days out of the year. Many of our neighbors, caregivers, who are special, without their special needs individuals, families with young children, including myself, are walking these streets daily and experience the dangers. I ask you today, how many accidents have happened outside of your home? How often are you afraid to take your trash cans to the curb without being hit by a speeding vehicle past your house? And lastly, have you ever been robbed of your peace and comfortability while playing with your children? I'm with fun, Paul. This is the fear living on Thornridge Drive. Let's face it, it's an election year for all of you. If my children had lost their lives that day, every politician and community member would be wondering where and why a safety measure in this area was not put to play. And the truth is, it has been brought to the attention of the engineers, the police, the traffic committee, and you now yet again. It is time to be proactive instead of retroactive after a tragedy occurs. So please consider applying for a state grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development to help fund improvements that need to be made on Upper Thornridge Drive. Let's work together to make our community safe.
Thank you very much. Chief Whitney, any comment on that?
I want to get the mic. Yes, not for me? Is it on? I'm familiar with the traffic crash that she's referring to, it was a DUI driver. Mr. Chairman, I, we used to sit on the NTAC Committee, I think this is a great thing for the NTAC Committee to consider. I know we've corresponded, so I know Ms. Paskey was at the meeting last night, and our traffic safety sergeant and our engineer are looking into options and we're doing another speed study. So, you know, there's, this is definitely an area that we can give further examination to and that we can work together.
The, the, a big issue is, we as the township, I'm not downplaying anything, or not willing to do any, there's nothing I'm not willing to do. We can't just put stop signs up without PENDOT, which is a major pain in the neck. Years ago, we found out that there was road, there were roads where we had put up stop signs, we weren't supposed to, we had to take a lot of stop signs down. As for why some roads have them and some don't, I'm not sure. But there is, you know, their alternatives are like striping and speed bumps and stuff like that. You know, but that only does so much, but you know, we'll take it seriously. RBB was at the meeting last night, something from Middletown Burnick, you said, the engineer?
Was the engineer at the meeting last night?
Yeah, we were there as well as Officer Penelope.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a, I got an email about it and we corresponded, like I said, and it's, you know, Thornridge Tribe has always been one of those areas that, you know, has raised a lot of concern on the part of residents. And it is a mystery how, when this town was laid out, some areas got stop signs and some, I've been here almost forty years, I have no idea of that.
Well, we did put one on Thornridge Drive years ago, probably two thousand and nine. And I know it was a big deal to get it. But something that really does reduce speed is simply striping, like stripes on either side of the road, so it narrows the road. A big problem with some of these bigger roads, and Austin Drive is another one, where it's just a big road and people drive on it like they're on a freeway.
When was the last study done?
Last speed study?
You said another speed study, does that?
Um, you know what?
Was one done before?
This is actually, not only can we use a radar speed study, which the sign is also a traffic calming measure, but we're about to onboard technology that'll give us the ability to look back twelve months even, but get real-time speed data on every street in the township. So this will be somewhat of an academic exercise, we'll be able to look and the public yourself, you'll be able to do it as well.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty.
Where's the mic, please?
We've been listening to twenty-one, my mom did have a speed trap placed up there. Every other day, there was a technician trying to fix the speed trap, it's the digital one that shows your speed.
Oh, yeah.
Which, as we all know, is not accurate, as soon as you see that, you slow down. And it was collecting inaccurate data, which was then presented, and so we were dismissed because it wasn't showing, you know, people were speeding.
That was in twenty twenty-one?
Twenty-one or twenty.
Another big headache is that local police can't use radar, which is crazy, but that's a whole different conversation.
They only did tell me that.
I mean, the statements.
Yeah, and I understand that, and he did say about the boxes that are undetectable, like you can have them, they're not really visible for people to see. So, you know, we just, I understand this is going to be a process and I'm in it for the ride, but something needs to happen.
Okay, I just want you to add to, to your list of advocacy, because I didn't hear this name, and because it could involve PENDOT if stop signs are an issue. And we can liaise with you to this end, but the state rep Jim Prokopiac?
We have been in contact.
Okay.
They have provided us, we have picked up at their office on Thursday.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Right, very excellent presentation, very well done. Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Sarah Kirk, and I'm here to discuss the data center that was approved for Falls Township. I understand that it was approved, and I understand that the governor is pushing this through as one of his top agenda pieces. But as a member of Falls Township, I'm deeply troubled by this data center. I have done extensive research on what a data center does with the community. And I have four, I'm sorry that I have to bring this up today. The first is the amount of electrical grid needed for a data center. So you need to constantly have a surplus of energy going into this data center. Do we have that type of infrastructure? I was told that we do, but then I talked to somebody who has worked down there, they're part of the plan to build this data center, and they informed me that there are power plants on site that is going to help give energy to this data center. So now I have questions about, do we even have enough now? So we have our, you know, whatever's coming from Dominion there, we have the TECO putting energy there. Are we going to have blackouts now as residents? Are we going to have enough energy to just sustain our life today? The answer I'm getting is no, from a lot of different people who even know about this project. I'm also being told that we can have our bills increase. So now that there's going to be a higher need for electricity in this area, they're going to have to make more electricity, which means there's going to be costs now passed on to the residents of Falls Township. My second issue is how much water is going to be needed for this data center? They are recycling water, but a data center can use millions of gallons a day. Do we have enough recycle there for that? Is our water going to be safe to drink? So now we're getting increased energy bills, and our water might not be safe to drink. And we all know how difficult it is in America to get safe drinking water once it's no longer safe. How will the emissions from this data center be monitored? I know the DEP is involved, but what kind of guidelines are we looking at? I was told that since this ground was already a steel mill, that they didn't need to do intense environmental impact studies because damage was already done. That's not a fair answer to the township residents. Who will be monitoring these emissions? With my concerns, I also looked into, maybe there's some positives to this data center. I saw that it could bring over twelve hundred jobs to the area, but then I looked into those jobs. You need a high degree, and you also need training. These are people who are data engineers, systems engineers. How many residents of Falls Township do you think fit into that category? Probably not that many. So now we're looking at more people coming to the area to move, to live here, rising costs. But then I looked into it even more, and it looks like once a data center is running, there's barely any people on site. So this twelve hundred jobs number, I'd like to see that number in a few years to see if that's actually how many people are working there. There is absolutely no benefit to Falls Township from this data center. But I just found out about it last week, or maybe two weeks ago. So I looked into the notes from past meetings here to learn more about the data center. Were any of my concerns addressed in past meetings, and the answer was no. Somebody asked in the March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, if this public util, if this would be using public utility, what will the impact be to businesses and residents within Falls Township? And the answer was that you didn't know how much energy would be needed for this data center, so you couldn't tell us if there was going to be blackouts. That's not fair to the people of Falls Township. And that's all I will say.
All right, thank you. A couple of things, the electric down there, the way the grid doesn't work, like everything that we use in Falls Township is not just coming from Dominion. When it was a steel mill, it used far more electric probably than a data center will use.
But we use more electric now than they did.
You're right, well, it wasn't that long ago, it was in the.
Two thousand, so now people are electric.
All right, I'm going to keep going. I highly doubt our bills are going to increase because of data center. There's other data centers right within our area, not as large as that one, but there's plenty of data centers. As for the water and cooling on the site, it's not going to affect any water, we're not getting water from down there. The water comes from Upper Bucks, all the water we use in Buck County. So the only thing they're using water for is cooling, that's the, you know, and the emissions that are coming off of it is steam from cooling. There's no, data isn't creating toxic fumes or anything like that. Go ahead.
It is in parts around the country, so if you look in Memphis right now, people of Memphis are having trouble breathing, and phoshyemia is rising, asthma is rising in these areas because of the data centers. And I was told it's because they're making their own power for those data centers, which then I found out we're doing that too.
I don't know how they're making power, I mean, we have a power plant that's been down there for twenty-some years now, but like I said, right, but I don't think it's going to affect your bill, it's not going to affect your bill, and you're not going to use, they're not using, there's not going to be less power for you because they're using more. And as far as the jobs down there, the majority of the jobs full-time are going to be maintenance jobs. So they are jobs that are very appealing to people. I know plenty, most of the data centers from Amazon, I don't know about the data centers, they use CBRE. And there's a lot of local people that work for CBRE doing maintenance. Not necessarily a data center, because I don't know any Amazon data centers, but Amazon, those use CBRE.
Along the website you guys posted about this, the data center, it listed the jobs that could potentially be there, and they were jobs that are probably not going to be there in a few years, because they don't need architects, they're constantly, they don't need engineers, they're constantly, unless you're the ones on site just making sure it's running. But that's such a small amount compared to the startup when they get running.
It's not a small amount, it's a, it's a, it's a significant amount, especially a data center of that size, it will be significant. And they're doing constant work in data centers. It's not like they turn it on and they let it, just let it run. There's constant work being done in them, I've worked in several data centers. But I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that you're wrong, but I think that people are overreacting to, and taking a lot of stuff, information that's not accurate, especially for that site. That's, you know.
Well, then I think you should give the township residents the correct information, and where can we find information that will give us an idea of what that site will run like?
We'll see if we can get something, but I don't think that until it's, they're done building it, I mean, nobody's going to know for sure exactly.
Know how many machines are going to be there, what kind of electric pool that's going to be.
I'll find out.
That would be great.
Yeah, we will. We did have someone, didn't we have someone do a presentation in a meeting from Amazon? No. Maybe it was just a staff meeting. Yeah, we'll get, we'll get something to come out. You're welcome. Any other public comment? Go ahead.
I have a speech like everybody else.
That's all right.
Just, I think just on.
What's your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Amy Fox.
Thanks, Amy.
So I think there just needs to be a little bit more communication, visibility into these, because I feel like having me in that part, that was real rough, a lot of our neighbors wanted to come. And I feel like trying to get ahold of, do things with this, with our township is very hard, but just wish that we would have a little bit more visibility.
We have a second meeting each month, which is on the fourth Monday, and that one starts at seven o'clock.
No, we have a regular board meeting, yeah.
Well, this is at five thirty, I'm not arguing with anybody, I just feel like, as a resident, if a person, I'm letting you guys know that, right?
Yeah, it's fine.
That that's a valid theory of the month.
It's always been the first and the third week of the month, but we have to tweak it a little bit, because we have to meet in Middletown because of construction.
Then also, after, um, I know Beaumont and Queen Anne is a huge issue with traffic, and I see Pennsbury School buses, little low stop sign. And I, my husband and I have always gotten hit numerous times, just as recently as last week. So I feel like we need to really, like, I don't know, I said, please, patrolling everywhere, but I think that's something that we should be looking into our township, especially around the school, because it's on the Walker, and we're over two blocks away from the school, so.
All right.
It has been deserved, was caught crossing, just crossing by the crossing road and taking twenty minutes to get to school versus crossing during the fifty mile an hour, but like, you know, talking about.
Yeah.
But then also, I just wanted to ask about the conditions of our roads around our township, I don't know, you know, if you guys live.
Yes.
In Barlow Hills.
No.
But between the high school, it could volleyball all the way down through Giant, it's an obstacle course.
So a lot of the roads that you hear about, I see it a lot, I get this a lot, are the, the majority of the roads, I'm not saying our roads are perfect, but the majority of the roads that are bad are state roads. And I know that sounds like an excuse, but it's not.
For us.
We've been advocating to get, New Falls Road, just an example, and Tyburn Road, that intersection is like the surface of the moon. And it's been like that as long as I've lived here. And we've been advocating and advocating, and it's on a list somewhere, Route thirteen, I know that's not necessarily the township major concern, but when you go down thirteen, that's the same thing, someone actually put up signs that says that you're entering a moon sim, a surface simulator or something like that. And, uh, but we've been trying to get roads fixed for, as, you know, you're, and it's not the state representative can't really help you because he's falling on deaf ears as well. You know, he gets up there and he yells at them, trying to get them to fix roads, and they do patchwork and.
Yeah, and then what about like our little streets? Because I know like Beaumont, they, it's a mess, and my grandfather was the original owner, and I bought a house on a street, so I've, I have three generations up in Beaumont, I've lived on Beaumont. It's a mess, and I know that we have a neighbor who has, someone uses a walker and she has braces, and it's a mess. And I know our one neighbor called, they came and patched it, but they patched it after it rained and there were still puddles. And I know we had our block party in June, end of June, the kids were literally picking up the asphalt patches.
Yeah.
When are we going to be in our drainage system if it's just a flood? I'd be more than happy to come back with the rest of the neighbors and our presentation of how bad it is. So like, how can we stop getting patchwork, and how can we actually get somebody to come in and do something when we have children?
Yeah.
Especially children, we have a smooth surface, and she's trying to play.
Well, I'll touch base with our engineer if you, um. Yeah.
It looks like a swamp.
If you want to send an email to the township, and I'll make sure I get ahold of it, and then I'll get the township engineer involved. I mean, I don't know when Beaumont was paid last, but I guess it sounds like a long time.
Two years ago, you said that we were due.
Yeah, I'm sure.
He was the original, so it's been a very long time since he says it's been paid.
All right, thank you. All right, no more public comment, that takes us to the budget workshop. Mrs. Ruclough, I guess this is your show now? You want to get that microphone?
Thank you. John, if you want to pick up?
Yeah, you know what, just for, for the members of the audience here tonight, citizens, and also for the supervisors, my first time through with Falls Township, so every town does it a little bit differently, I've been meeting with Betsy. Some of the department directors were just getting started in the process, so we'll certainly go through, Betsy has for you the budget timeline, which is important, you're probably very familiar with it. Some of the residents may not be, and we'll talk about that tonight. Some of the capital projects that are ongoing, we can report on some revenue projections that we have for you, and then also talk about where we're going in the future, which is additional meetings in October and November with the idea of getting this ready to go for approval and authorization for public advertisement in November. As you know, we do have to get this approved by the end of the, the end of the cap, the end of the year.
That's.
Easier to sit over here.
Perfect. Uh, down, yeah, that's it, you're good.
Okay. So to begin the budget workshop, obviously the best place to start is with a timeline. I sent everyone an email in advance with all of these attachments, so if you have them, great, if you don't, I have another set if you need them.
We have them up here.
Oh, okay, great. So we'll start with tonight's budget workshop, and we have scheduled two additional, one on October fourteenth and one on November twelfth. And we can, I can meet one-on-one or with John, with the board members, anytime through November nineteenth to get additional input, answer questions, whatever you may need, please email me, set up a time to come in and talk to us so we can all be on the same page with all the items on the budget. The budget presentation to the board will be on November twenty-fourth. Get authorization to advertise at that time, the public notice will go in the newspaper the next day. The public will be able to inspect the proposed budget from November twenty-sixth through December sixteenth, at which point we plan adoption of the twenty twenty-six budget at that public meeting. Item three on the agenda, just a short overview of the two thousand and twenty-five budget versus actual of our main revenues. Just want to let the board know that we are standing a good place as far as revenue collection. We are on track with all of our main revenue sources. Some of them are collected earlier in the year, so we see that we're already at ninety-five or above percentage-wise on the collections. Others, you'll see that we're only at half because it's collected quarterly, but everything is on track and nothing is falling below projections as far as our main revenue sources, such as our real estate taxes, real estate transfer taxes, our earned income tax, local services tax, mechanical devices, all of these are more than fifty percent. The building permits, electrical permits, heating and air conditioning and plumbing, you can see are well exceeding budgeted figures due to the construction at North Point on the data center. Our recycling number is even up at a hundred and fifteen percent of projected due to the incoming nine oh four grant that we get for recycling. Still, as far as revenues go, we're right on track or exceeding. Item number four is the status of the capital projects that were approved for this year's budget for two thousand and twenty-five. Again, we are at completion on multiple of these projects, the parks resurfacing, the pickleball court installation, the playgrounds replacement, items at the pool, the purchase of trucks that the Public Works Department needed. And I've talked to each department head and gone over their capital requests. Everything is either complete or will be completed by year-end, and if it hasn't been, they have been informed to carry it forward into the twenty-six budget. Another item regarding two thousand and twenty-five status is the budgeted projects that are handled through the township engineer and outside contractors. We'll be looking for, John and I just. Um, we'll be looking for, John and I discussed these, we'll be looking for board input on prioritization of what projects you want to see moving forwards uh as far as drainage projects, um groundwater issues, culverts and whatnot, so that we can prioritize these and uh and get in order to them. And also, we had a a late addition to this list uh that didn't make it on. We received a listing of routes from our public works director for Millen overlay. Not Millen overlay that can be done in-house, Millen overlay that would need to be contracted out, so.
That's not on here?
That was not on there. I do have a listing.
I'm not sure if they're up at the day or not.
Okay. Did you put them up?
If not, we'll get them to you.
So um, those items, he had prioritized, prioritized Millen overlays. I do have them.
Thanks, Betsy.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
He hasn't priced those yet. That was a late addition, as Betsy mentioned, so we'll get some numbers and see what makes sense there, if that's something we can include for next year. It's just um
Right.
Late information, so we'll, we'll work on that.
Roads that he can't do.
Right, these are roads that would need to be done by an outside contractor. I think the only road that he's looking to do um next year in-house is East Tyburn.
That's on, yeah, that's on the request.
That's on his, his capital project listing. I do have, I should have given this as well. Of course, as soon as I compile this list, I received, and I received changes. We've all announced as we close that through. This will happen daily throughout the entire budget process. I've put anything in green that was updated between my panel this afternoon and this meeting. So for the twenty twenty six capital requests, you'll see that um a large portion of it is from the Parks Department. Um, they're looking to renovate Penns Grant Park. And they will be applying for a D C N R grant for it, but we've included all the line items within the budget um pending grant approval. Um, so he is looking to refurbish some of the parks, uh get back on board with our soccer field maintenance program, update the park signage, and um complete the renovations to the hockey rink. Um, also at the pool, very small projects, a new vacuum, the handicap shower replacement, some chairs, excuse me. And importantly, security cameras around the perimeter and the parking lot. There's been some theft from vehicles, and there've been some altercations there that have required police presence, so we wanted to get some cameras down there. From Public Works, the Millen overlay project that we already discussed, and then a couple items got carried forward because the new, they'll need to go into the new building, like the new vinyl cutter. And uh he is requesting two new pickup trucks. New pickup trucks, an asphalt roller with a tow package, a zero-turn mower, and the continuation of tree removal throughout the township. Um, we're projecting forward to twenty twenty seven with his budget and replacement of our streets, street sweeper. Fire department has nothing new on theirs and not requesting any vehicles. Administration is primarily a cleanup of items carrying forward from this year. Uh, development signage, uh road cleanup program with tag, our intersection improvements, which are be being funded through grants, and we are only uh responsible for a township match. We'd like to do a study for traffic impact fee and a revenue generation analysis for the amphitheater project. That was a carry forward from last year as well. Um, the code department, the I M R scanning project, that's a carry forward, as well as blight remediation. That will be in continuing annual project for the township. From H R, we'd like a, some additional software for on, onboarding process for new employees. And the police are looking at four new patrol vehicles, replacing some body armor that has expired and five new A E Ds. So the list from the department heads is not particularly lengthy or endless, but those items need to be gone through. We will have the department heads available at upcoming budget workshops to answer any questions you may have on any of their items. So what we're looking for tonight from the board is not any decisions per se, just general direction and any capital projects that you may be aware of that haven't been listed anywhere that we can get in pro, get in the process and get it on paper, so that we have it um to look forward to.
Thanks, Betsy. Really nice job. Just a clarification, I don't think we need a department head to answer, but I'm just, um, so for the blight remediation, uh the approved amount in twenty twenty five was two hundred thousand. Um, only eleven thousand was spent. Um, so is twenty twenty six a request for the full two hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it will just be a standard amount to carry forward that may or.
May not be used.
But I know that there is a listing, Matt can speak to this actually.
No, I kinda know. It's, we're, we're expanding it.
There was only one property.
Yes.
That was addressed in twenty twenty five.
Yes.
And I believe we're looking at multitude of properties in twenty twenty six.
Thanks, I did. I just wanted to confirm that that'll continue to be something that the board, that the township spends money on.
Yes.
Um, so without department heads, I have several questions, but I will save them for when they can be kind of answered best, but just while we're here, I do, um, and I'll let the bo, rest of the board now, Mr. Chair, that um I have strong support for two of the, um, well, I strongly support uh the Parks and Rec request for the renovation of Penns Grant, specifically as it relates to the tennis court repair and resurfacing. That's the only tennis court in our township, um, and with pickleball, it does get a lot of use, even though we did build pickleball courts for the pickleballers. It's a centralized location, and we still get a lot of action there from the, from them. There, it's cracked up. Uh, so that would be nice. Uh, the other thing is Safety Town. So Safety Town is the little town that is kind of like a replica is created in a space um that has sort of crosswalks, stop signs, bus stops. And uh kids go there usually around preschool, kindergarten age, and it's sort of a destination for field trips and stuff like that, where kids kind of learn safety and without having to be at risk of in the actual street and in a smaller controlled environment. Uh, I've seen it done in some other communities, and I, I just would love to have this here and available to our schools and daycares who wanted to use it, and um just, I think it's apt, especially for some of the public comments tonight, that like we just can't be too safe on either side. So um that is all I'll say about tonight, and I'll follow up with my questions at the next workshop.
I, at some point, I know that we stopped it two years ago, but we need to reconsider the road program. There's still a lot of streets, Beaumont is one apparently, that, you know, that never got finished. I mean, we had a schedule, and these roads were getting done, and then we kind of put up the brakes on it for a little while. But that's something we definitely have to revisit. Um, I'm gonna ask uh Mr. Jones, who's not here to get with Joe Arnejo from Public Works about, you know, I see this list of roads for Millen overlay, but there's still a lot of roads that need, not a lot, but you know, we just cut it off and it's almost done, not almost done, but close to it. I know that he gave us an estimate with uh all different prices that you can pick and choose from, as if it was a menu, you know what I mean? And if we had a number in mind, we could do the X, Y, and Z, which I think is what Joe's getting at with this. Um, but I feel that's something that we have to revisit. Um, but other than that, this is an excellent start, and thank you very much for, I know everybody put a lot into it, apparently, even this afternoon. So thank you to that. Um, and I guess that's all I have.
Okay, well, we do, we're in the midst of scheduling the meeting with the engineer.
Correct.
Um, so that we can discuss these issues.
Excellent.
So anything else that comes up that you won't look at, please let us know, because something will be coming up next week during the weekend.
Yes, correct. All right, and that takes us to manager comment, Mr. Shepherd. Anything?
Nothing, just um I appreciate the welcome. It's been great from the elected officials and the staff, and um appreciate the residents coming out tonight. It's great to meet some people, and I'm looking forward to being here, so thank you.
Got it. And you have any comment?
No comment.
None? And then I asked for motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second it, or in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.